Hello?
Hello.
Hey, Dan.
Hey, Sally.
Yeah, enable my cameras, Sally.
Oh.
Background.
I don't know if I don't know if I know how to do that. If not, a way for Cliff to come on.
All the hosts have stopped, okay. So I'm not going to use this background for tonight's meeting.
What is it?
It's a picture of Augie.
You guys are so funny. Yeah, I don't know. Let me see something. What?
Another lovely day.
It's beautiful out today. Yeah, it was a little hairy this morning.
Yeah, it was a rain woke me up for a couple of times.
Yeah. I've been busy, though. I've been keeping busy. Are you at home or you at the?
I'm at home.
Good.
Yeah, but I'm back tomorrow. Basically, I'm doing a, you know, two days a week from home, three days a week in the office. I have this, I go on Monday, work Tuesday, Wednesday, and then go back Thursday, Friday, which was like, I wish I could do, you know, continuous somehow.
Right. Well, why?
What?
Why can't you?
Well, I gotta, I'm trying to keep a minimum amount of people in the office because it's all, you know, coenforcement is essential.
Yeah.
You know, you know, ease everyone's mind and give them a couple of days at home.
Yeah.
Sally, can you make the VOM admin account the host?
How do I do that, Cliff? I like, I don't see the right screen. I see my joint audio share screen invite others.
Do you see a button that says participants?
I only see it at the bottom.
Yep, click on it once and then a little side.
I see it. Thank you.
And then just right-click VOM Administrator.
Or do I hit more? Let me see. Make host. Good. Thank you, Cliff.
Yep, no problem.
Yeah. Dan, um, for the rest of these meetings, I've changed meeting notice. I posted them online to include the YouTube link. So can I?
Broadcasting these on YouTube? Because we never broadcasted these meetings in the past, but no, it doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, they are. They have to be live streamed somewhere, and LMC couldn't do it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Their meetings. So tomorrow, can I send those to you? And can you have someone print them and just post them downstairs on the glass?
Sure.
Thank you.
Oh, you gotta let me start my video, Cliff.
Yep, I just got the controls.
Well, that took a long time.
Yeah, I'm remotely connected to the conference room PC. I assume that's where Augie's going to be again, and that's where I'm hosting it.
Oh, the chief is here, but he doesn't have his.
Amy.
Who is that?
Cliff.
Yep, I can hear you.
Hi, Augie.
There we go.
Augie, look at the screen.
I should show this to him earlier.
That's his Facebook picture, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Oh, the other night, I looked up, I went to put a picture of the seal in the background. So I Googled Village of Ameritic Steel, and this is one of the pictures that came up.
Our, our?
I'm not gonna use this for the regular meeting, but I did use it. We had a Zoom meeting earlier today.
Can you lift your arm and pick his nose? I know it does. You gotta have fun.
That's better.
What time does the meeting officially start? Five or?
Yes, five.
So I'm not gonna start streaming to YouTube until 4:55. I'll do the same thing.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah. And maybe going forward, we don't have to have a whole half hour.
Yeah, the half hour has worked out well for the learning curve so far.
Yeah.
I'm trying to think what else. Oh, Victor, I was working on his laptop. He's gonna join soon, but who would have thought? Like, I was pushing out updates to try to resolve his webcam issue since 1 o'clock, and apparently it's, it's still applying the updates.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, he's gonna join with his iPhone, I think.
Well, with the change in the law with high nor with government change, nice head, Dan. Um, you don't have to have a video to be able to vote anymore.
Okay.
Just for now.
For now, right. Because Victor is still having problems, Cliff was saying, with the, with his.
Yeah, I was working with him since 1:00 PM, and his laptop is still applying updates.
And I didn't, I didn't get, I didn't go to my Outlook calendar. It just went, but I was able to click on the email.
Okay. Yeah, some of them are calendar invites. It depends how it comes into your inbox.
Always a challenge, but we figure it out.
Yep.
Nora, I can always help you with that, though.
No, I, it just didn't go to my calendar, but I clicked on it. It was fine.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Of course.
I should have tried earlier, but I was, you know, catering.
How are they doing?
They're doing okay. You know, they're doing okay. They're cheerful. I'm walking their dog during the day, so that's good. That's one less activity.
Nice to be able to get out when the weather's good.
Yeah, they were just forgetting to walk her. But I think I'm a wonderful cook, so that's great. Everything I make, they're happy with.
I'm sure you are.
Did we start? Sally, did you see an orange bar on the top of the screen when the meeting started that said broadcast?
No.
I mean, it's not a big deal, but we're supposed to have a broadcast bar. That's okay.
I did see that it was recording the meeting.
Yeah, yeah. You know what we may not have done? We may not have enabled the practice session, which isn't a big deal. It just means that when we started it, it actually started. That's why it's recording already, but.
Does that mean we're live?
Well, our Zoom meeting is live. So technically, if, if somebody from the public clicked on the link right now, they would show up in the attendee list, and they could see the pre-meeting. It's not like anything's really going on right now, though.
Okay, I'll make sure going forward that that's clicked on the meetings that I.
Yep.
Schedule.
No problem.
Nora, were you able to get the backup needed for tonight? I added one new thing, the revenues.
Didn't that get sent to us? I think, oh, let me, let me look online. I thought that got sent to us, and then I printed it, but let me just double-check.
Dan, do you have the revenues that were posted today? Dan's.
Everybody hear me?
Yep.
Yes. Dan Natchez, did you get the revenue that were posted today?
No, I did not. I've been.
I emailed them.
Overseased conference calls and literally just hung up.
Augie emailed them to you?
I can't get them now. That's part of my problem. I'll try and search.
Well, I get maybe share your screen or someone share your screen when you're talking.
I'm on the phone. It's hard to read that, but I'll follow along with it.
Someone's, we're getting some feedback from someone's microphone. Does someone have two sessions open?
I don't think so. I may have many things, but I would never have.
Not me.
Cliff, I'm gonna try muting. Let me see if it gets better.
Testing, one, two, three. Nope, I still have some feedback that I'm hearing.
Does it matter that Augie's on?
Yeah, no, I mean, Augie's got his stuff off. That's good, because he's in the same room as the conference room PC. Uh, you know what? I see on Dan's screen, it's lighting up.
What? Dan, me or Dan?
Natchez. Are you there? I couldn't hear that. Can't make out what you're saying.
Can you hear me?
Now I can.
What's lighting up?
Uh, when I talk, I'm hearing feedback from someone's speakers that are feeding back into the microphone.
Well, I'm on the iPhone, so if the iPhone is feeding back into the iPhone, I have nothing to talk about.
Okay. Let me check. Hopefully, it's, maybe it's my input.
Cliff, it seems like when you speak, it lights up on, when any of us speak, it lights up on Dan's as well.
Look, you might want to buy a name brand headset.
I've got a Sennheiser. We've got two attendees.
It probably is, Dan, just because I imagine he has the speaker on, the, you coming through the speaker on his iPhone, and how close it is to the microphone on the iPhone is probably causing the feedback. But it didn't happen yesterday, same phone. It did not happen yesterday?
No, it was clear yesterday.
Okay.
So Cliff, the feedback's only coming from the microphone, right?
I'm hearing it when everyone talks.
Right, try to shut it off on your, on your mic. Do you have a session open on your computer that you're running away?
All right, we have a little bit of time. What I can do, I'm gonna mute everybody, and then we'll test the sound, and we'll unmute one person at a time and see where, where it's happening. Okay. I have no feedback, but I'm the only one with an open mic now. And now the conference room also has an open mic. Any feedback, Augie?
No.
All right, that's clear. And Dan Natchez. Oh, there it is. Something's up with the connection there. You don't have additional speakers connected, do you?
Nope. So unless you have any suggestions, I don't know what to do.
Uh, you, I don't know what you just did, but you came in loud and clear. You weren't muffled that time.
I moved, moved the phone.
Maybe you had a weak connection in that one section of your desk or table where the phone was.
Get another.
That's perfect. All right, uh, wait, we gotta. All right, I'm unmuting everybody now. I think that's it. That was it. All right, everyone's mic is open now.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cliff.
Yep, no problem.
Yeah, Cliff. I have a silly question. My wireless keyboard is about to die. Which, which is the one that you typically orders? You know which one you typically order?
I have five in stock right now.
My, my, at home.
Oh, wow. It's the MK270, I believe.
Okay, that's.
Starts at five.
Remember that right now.
Yeah, that's it. MK270, Logitech.
It's frustration-free packaging is $25. The regular packaging is $35. It sounded right there.
Yep.
You ever got an invite? Sally, you still on?
Uh, I'm.
Yes, Augie, I'm speaking to Laura. She's having a problem getting on.
I ordered an invite to the chief, Leahy.
I'm sorry?
So I'm on it, Sally.
All right, Cliff's gonna do that. I'll take care of Laura.
Send it over.
Thanks, Sally.
Hello, I'm speaking.
Cliff?
Yes.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. LMC putting this on?
Uh, this one, I, I don't think that the budget meetings they'll be putting on, they wanted me to send them the video files afterwards. So we're hosting it on YouTube, and then that's on the webpage. I think Rob put it on Facebook today, too.
And so they'll put the video file on their YouTube channel?
Uh, they, they host it on their actual webpage.
All right. Because we got two public safety meetings, and, you know, public safety is public safety. So that's what I'm concerned about, but all right.
Yeah, the last I, the last emails I had yesterday with Rob and Matt Sullivan, they just said to me, when the meetings are completed, send over a copy of the video, and then they'll put it up on their YouTube channel as well as their, their website, the LMC TV website.
Augie, any, any idea if that's required?
Yes, you have to stream the video.
Yeah, that's.
Have to stream the video for the last Friday's meeting.
Because in years past, right, these meetings have just been whoever attends the work session at the, at the courtroom.
Correct. Wade Bautramo specified regular meetings, special meetings, budget hearings. They all have to be, transcripts have to be done, and they have to be live streamed, and you can't use Facebook. It's a live streaming requirement.
Okay.
Hit the login.
What I'll do is I'll tell, I'll tell that. Everyone can hear me anyway, so.
But I would, I mean, we haven't noticed it, but I would imagine if there was something that couldn't be discussed publicly, and it met the open meetings law requirements, there could be an executive session.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, you know, if I slip up and ask a question about public safety, that it's not, you know, I just have to be careful. That's all. But there's a sensitivity to public safety that is different than, you know, if we're going to cancel a block party, per se. You know what I mean? That's where I'm concerned.
All right, I've also advised the chief that these are being publicized for a specific reason.
Okay, good. That's good then. Okay.
Uh, we're gonna go live on YouTube in four minutes.
Okay.
I have a question that I meant to email today, but I never, I didn't send the email, and it's just, I think we didn't do this. We got a recommendation from the Budget Committee to plead to increase the amount we would be charging or billing out the police.
I've been asking, I've been asking to hold that off so it doesn't impact us negatively when we go to PBA negotiations.
Because so, so it wouldn't be, so we won't be counting it in this, the revenue.
We will eventually.
Eventually, but not now.
Right now. Not right now. We tip our hands if we, you know. Okay. Cliff and Augie?
Yeah.
And Jerry. Cliff, you have the controls of the meeting, and I don't need to be here. I'm going to leave. I'll have my phone and my email if you need me for any reason. Just text or email me.
Yeah, the conference room is hosting it, and I have remote access to that. Augie's onsite, and, yeah, that should be fine.
Have a good meeting, all.
Thanks, Sally. Is Victor gonna join or not?
Jerry, I have the revenue file up in case you need me to share my screen.
I'm muted, but okay. When revenue discussion comes up, I think the board got it earlier today, but whenever revenue comes up, you can pop it up. I'm just trying to finish, I'm gonna try to secure some PPE from EOC right now, so I'm, I'm going off.
Okay.
All right, I reset the invite to Chief Leahy, and I'm gonna start the live stream on Zoom in 10 seconds.
Hi, Nora. Kelly.
Hi, how are you?
I'm saying hi to everyone as they pop up in full screen.
Did anybody hear me?
Nope.
Who was that? Dan, what's up?
I hear you, but I don't see you.
You don't see me?
I see him.
There we go.
Oh, there you are.
All right, I got it.
You got a camera. You got a camera.
Got a camera, and I'm in my house. I'm gonna finish making my tea.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, the meeting is live and streaming. And I'm gonna drop out of the video. Anyone has any problems, just let me know. Send me a text and email. I'm available, and I'll be watching the meeting.
Okay, thanks, Cliff.
Yep, no problem.
I see we have Ed and Ellen again. Hello.
Are we doing Pete first? Does the chief come on?
Chief got an invite.
I'm actually doing two screens. This is like way past my skill level.
You got really technical.
You'll never go back.
When I was in high school, I started offering computer science classes. And I remember thinking, where's this gonna go? Hey, Colby, I'm just about to start the Zoom meeting. Hey Colby, uh, I'm just about to start the Zoom meeting. Okay, one minute. Hello, Vasami.
Hi Tom, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good thanks.
How are the kids, driving you crazy yet?
Nah. You know, trying to do the homeschooling thing, it's not working out as well as it should, I think, but.
Appreciate teachers more of this.
Exactly.
Alright folks, it's five o'clock. Good evening and welcome to the 5:00 PM budget work session of the Village of Marion Portraits of Peace. Tonight, we're going to discuss, uh, the police department and the fire debacle. I need a motion to open this meeting.
So move.
Second.
Ball in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, I guess we'll start, I mean, Jerry, did you have a preference of where we start with Chief Primrose or Chief Leahy?
Okay, hey Jerry. I have no preference.
Okay, well, let's start with Chief Primrose, cause he's here. Chief, how are you?
A little tired, but ready to go.
You're healthy, right?
Yes, absolutely, I have not gotten sick.
Good, thank God. Careful out there. Chief, why don't you, you wanna run us through your budget, or you want Jerry to help you? Run through the budget here?
I would love some assistance.
Alright, well, I cut right to the chase, chief.
Okay.
The, uh, budget has a 15% increase in several different areas. If you can identify the areas, let me get to that page.
Okay, so I'm, believe you're talking about the increases that we put into, um, the, the, the main title is uniforms?
Yeah, let's go to radios first and let me just get to the right page, I apologize.
I gotta find the correct page myself.
Seventy-two, I'm starting at seventy-two, working my way up the line. Okay, your first increase is to, at the top of page seventy-three of one seventy-nine, you have an increase of, um, what looks like nine thousand dollars in pagers and radios to comply with the new county requirements.
Yes, okay, now I understand what you're talking about. Okay, so, um, what is happening is that currently the, the county radio system is operating on antiquated technology. It's what we, what is known as V H F low band radios. And this is technology that goes back, uh, actually into the, well into the fifties. And, um, the manufacturers of radios have stopped supporting these techno, this technology at this point. With that, it's become increasingly difficult to maintain the radio system and the county who handles our dispatch has been looking for several years to, um, phase out the low band system and, uh, move all of our communications up into the U H F high band. And we've actually been anticipating this for a while, we've been curbing our purchases of pagers to the absolute minimum for a number of years because we knew this was coming. And we've been trying to get information from the county for years, they finally, about three or four months ago, confirmed with us that the, um, the frequency range, although not the actual frequency, um, that they were gonna be using for the new paging systems. That, uh, expense, um, of replacing the pagers, while it, um, doesn't have to be 100% today or this year coming, uh, we have to start making the purchases for the, for the planned phase out. And to be honest, if the system, if, if the county system were to have a major failure today, um, we would run into a big problem because, again, they, they're not supporting the technology anymore. So this is the, what would, will actually be the first of at least two or three rounds of purchases of new pagers to replace the old ones as the technology is phased out. That's why the, that's why the large number.
Okay.
A question, is it possible not to increase the number this year and push it into next year?
Okay, um, I am not the radio person, to be honest, I'm basing what I've put in here on my, um, my assistant chief who's been handling radios for the department for a number of years. I don't know off the top of my head the exact date that the county is going to, number one, begin transmitting on the new frequencies. And the other side of it is that I, again, I don't know the exact date that they're gonna stop transmitting on the current frequencies. The current frequencies could, um, theoretically go down at any time at this point and repairing them, I don't believe the county is gonna make a major investment to replace them because the tech, as I said, the support is going away and actually for the most part has gone away. We actually have been trying to buy radios for some of our apparatus in that, in that bandwidth and we can't get them from our normal suppliers. This is something that is gonna happen, um, whether we wanna make it wait or not. Because at some point, the system is gonna go down. We don't wanna be in the position that we are unable to get our calls, we wanna make sure that we can, um, continue to respond. And I think that putting it off, um, might be a problem, um, probably could be a problem, but again, the, the time factor on that is, there's some unknowns because we don't know when the system is gonna finally go down.
Now, Chief, let me ask you something. Back when, uh, the prior chief was around, we, we bought a, we spent a hundred something thousand dollars on radios, were these different radios?
Yes, these are our pagers.
These are your pagers.
Okay, um, there are, uh, over a hundred pagers in the department, I don't have the exact number, again, my radio person handles that stuff for me. There are over a hundred pagers in the department, um, and they're given to the members to carry, to alert them of, of a call in the village. They're a portable unit, they're nowhere near as expensive as the, the, the big portable radio, well, I, I shouldn't say big, as the portable radios that you so graciously purchased for us a few years ago. The, that's a completely different system, that's for on, the, the radios that were purchased a few years ago was a, um, it's an on-fire-ground actual operations channel, not a dispatching situation.
Okay. So there was something, I was just sort of, it was a big increase, hold on here.
Yes, I know there are, there are several.
Yeah, you, you know what's going on, chief, right? I mean.
I do, I, I'm well aware that there is a, um, there's gonna be a shortfall this year in income and I'm, I'm, I'm absolutely willing to work with it. I just don't know, um, where we can make a lot of cuts, I have one or two possible ideas, um, but as far as the radios, I mean, we might be able to cut it back, I don't know if we could cut it completely, that's, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Well, I'm, I'm open to your ideas about where to cut.
Okay, um, well, I'm gonna be perfectly honest, uh, if you look at what I, has already been spent this year, the, the building improvements budget has not been moving as quickly, so I would, I would be willing to accept some ridic, well, I would suggest cutting a little bit from that area, um, I'm not sure how much, but, uh, cut some from there, um.
What, what area were you talking about?
Jerry. For cutting?
Account, uh, four oh nine, building improvement.
Thirty-four, four oh nine.
Augie, what page is that?
Page seventy-four, uh, bottom, thirty-four, four oh nine.
Thank you.
Right. So building improvements. So.
Automotive repairs go up so much, right above that.
Um, okay, automotive repairs, my page numbers don't match yours, people, so just bear with me.
Okay.
Automotive repairs.
Am I muted?
Okay.
Where, where are you, Tom, on automotive repairs?
Uh, page seventy-four.
Yeah.
Right in the middle of the page.
Can you, I'm sorry, but the chief has different, has a different report, cause he only has his department, so the page numbers don't help him.
Yeah.
The account number, the account number's probably better to give him.
Yeah, thirty-four, ten, zero, four, zero, eight.
I, I have it now.
I'm sorry, uh, zero, uh, zero, four, zero, seven. He's got it. Why'd that go up, up so much, chief?
Uh, trying to remember, um. I, I believe we increased it, uh, because at, um, we worked on the, the first meeting of the budget, we were already, um, very close to what we had spent, uh, what we had budgeted for this year. I don't have all of the exact history, but that line typically comes very close to and occasionally, from what I understand, has gone over, um, its number and I'm just trying to find it again on the older sheet. Yeah, so, just as an example, as of today, um, with still two months to go and some, repair problems that have occurred, um, we're down to six thousand dollars and, um, I'm afraid we're actually gonna go over and I believe we increased it based on, on the fact that we assumed it was gonna go over, uh, this year. Cause a hundred and ten is, I believe, what was originally budgeted for, um, the last year and before that. So we, we, we raised it based on, um, the predicted increase in costs based on the fact that we had burned through so much money this year rapidly. Sorry, that was a roundabout answer, I apologize.
The question is, can it be pulled back?
Yes, I believe it can be, um, however, it, it's on, it's somewhat unpredictable. If I were to have a major, um, breakdown, for example, if, God forbid, we were to blow an engine or a pump were to, um, uh, have a major failure, um, we would end up blowing right through the, through the, through the budget or having to take an apparatus out of service, a piece of apparatus out of service for a long time.
I, I don't think anybody wants to compromise the ability of the department to function and to render the fantastic service which you do, but right now, the village is hemorrhaging.
I understand that, um.
So the question really is, on all this and all departments are being asked, where can, where can cuts be made to what I would call non-essential things that could be postponed for a year, not that anything in the budget this year that's been proposed is wrong or, you know, is fluff, et cetera, it's a question of, when we have to tighten our belts, everybody has to tighten the belt.
Yes, of course. Um, okay, so, yes, we could certainly cut the, cut the, um, the maintenance budget, back possibly to where it was this year, uh.
What number is that? Twelve thousand? The maintenance budget? Sorry, the, a hundred and ten thousand?
Yes.
Okay, so taking thirty thousand off of that, what else do you have?
If we were to take, uh, I'm sorry, I just, I, I wanna make sure I have my numbers correct as I'm going through this, um, going back to the, uh, building improvements, um.
Building improvements, for two years in a row, you spent in excess of eighty-five thousand dollars. This year, you've only spent twelve thousand dollars.
That's correct.
How much do you wanna take off of that?
Um. How about fifteen?
Fifteen?
Yeah.
And why did you spend eighty-five thousand for two years in a row or eighty-eight, around eighty-five thousand and this year, you've only spent about twelve thousand?
Sure, I, I can, I can absolutely explain that, so, um, first of all, the, um, well, let me correct that, I can't explain why the past two years, uh, the, the past few years, the number was that, that high because it was not my department at that time. However, this year, um, we've run into a couple of challenges with deciding exactly what, um, changes we wanna make to the firehouses. As you know, uh, well, actually you may not, Jerry, because you're, you're, you're kinda new, new here still.
Very new.
Um. The lion's share of the improvement budgets go to the firehouse that the chief is out of.
Oh.
Now, in this case, because we have a building that is, um, a joint venture between two companies, um, instead of getting one group of people to agree, I actually had, we actually have to get two people, groups of people to agree about, um, changes in com, common areas. Okay. This has, this has slowed us down quite a bit. Add to it, um, some other issues that we've had this year with personnel issues and, um, some other things that I admit have distracted me. Um. The money hasn't been, uh, spent as quickly as possible as we, as in the past, uh, which is why as of right now, we don't have as much spent. Now, the reality is that I'm currently waiting for several quotes, um, hopefully they will be in, uh, one of them will be in tomorrow, that's a fairly large quote, um, for an upgrade for something. And we're also working on, uh, two additional projects here in the fire, in the firehouse, one of which was, has already partially been funded, which is replacing a fluorescent, of, uh, a number of the fluorescent lights with LEDs. Um, and there's a, there's gonna be a second phase to that once the first one's complete. And then, uh, and added expenses for that and also, um, uh, some, uh, finishing up some work that was never actually completed properly when the firehouse was built 10 years ago.
Such as what?
Sorry, go ahead, Dan.
Sorry, go ahead, Dan.
Such as what? I'd like to try and get a little bit better handle on the specifics, what we're talking about.
Okay, sure. So we'll start with our windows in the firehouse. The contractor put up the cheapest possible wood he could put up. It's discoloring. It was never finished properly. There are no window treatments on the windows, so we have no shades, no privacy in certain areas where we needed. Things like that was all left by the wayside. From a security standpoint, our electronic locking system that is throughout our firehouse here was never fully completed. That's another project that is on the on the plans for the upgrades of the firehouse here. And we're also trying to make one of our areas a little bit more inviting to the volunteers in hopes of keeping them coming and possibly even drawing some new membership to us. If you look at the older firehouses in the community, there's a this probably isn't the right word, but an ambiance to them. It draws people. Our building here, it's been described as a cafeteria. It's been described as an office. It hasn't been described as a home, which is what you find a lot of other firehouses being called. And that, a lot of our younger members are indicating that is detrimental to their wanting to be here and detrimental to drawing other people here. So that's something we want to change a little bit where we can.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
On the uniforms.
Yes.
You originally requested seventy-eight thousand, and then you went up to a hundred and one.
Okay, so I can explain that quite simply. The standards on the uniforms, specifically our protective clothing, not our dress uniforms, have changed. There is more protection for the firefighters in regards to cancer protection and other chemical penetration. And there's been an overall increase in the cost of an ensemble from the fire, from the manufacturers of almost thirty percent, which is why we've increased that number as much as we have. The turnout gear has a ten-year life. And after that, it's it's really not supposed to be used for interior firefighting. If someone were to get hurt, the first thing the lawyers would do when they, when the lawsuit came up is they would roll out the NFPA standard, and I don't know the exact number. Pardon me. That says that the turnout gear should not be more than ten years old. So we do need to replace it on a regular basis, and the cost of doing so has gone up.
Okay, so let's take the turnout gear out of the equation. Because that one, ten thousand, eight hundred. Is there some you can give back on the other increases?
Okay.
You guys looking spiffy, but, you know.
Well, okay. I don't have the exact breakdown in front of me of how much was spent on, you're referring to dress uniforms and things like that.
The forms went from twelve thousand to twenty-five thousand.
I'm just looking for that page.
Three, four, one, zero, dot, oh, two, five, oh.
Point three oh. Replacement uniforms is listed as. It doubled.
More than double.
Yeah, more than double.
I'm sorry, I'm just having trouble following where we are on the pages.
Okay, we'll wait for you.
Thank you. Okay, here we go. All right. Replacement uniforms. Okay. Actually, okay, from twelve thousand to twenty-five. So that money actually is mostly used for when a set of gear gets damaged to the point it needs to be replaced. But yeah, I see. That is a big increase.
Can we give that a haircut, chief?
Yes, absolutely. How about we take that down to eighteen?
We're going in the right direction, at least. Thank you.
Is that not enough?
No, I mean, no. I appreciate the effort.
Okay.
Two additional areas you need to talk about, chief, if I can jump in.
Of course.
A, three, four, one, zero, oh, two, five, seven, replacement of old or damaged fire hose.
Yes.
You budgeted nine thousand. You haven't spent any yet. And you're asking for ten thousand.
Okay.
Why haven't you spent any yet?
The quote came in today for half of it.
Okay, so you'll spend forty-five hundred.
Yes, but that's only part of the hoses being ordered. There's some discussion about with some of our hoses, a I don't want to say a new technology, but a bit of an improvement. And to be honest, I am more of a ladder firefighter than an engine firefighter, so I'm having to rely on input from other members. And there's a discussion back and forth with regards to our, what we call attack lines, which are the slightly smaller hoses that we use, not as opposed to the really large ones. And improving the technology on those, which is a little bit more expensive, and I'm trying to be as frugal as I can with regards to that. So we're working on determining if there's enough benefit to replace the rest of the aging hose this year with the newer technology hose, which is what the delay is there. When the discussion came up, it was already into the cold months and performing any testing was not really possible because we didn't want to be putting a bunch of ice on the ground.
If you spend nine thousand dollars worth of hose before June first, do you need to spend another ten thousand dollars worth of hose after June first?
We'd be moving on to the next rig, basically, that gets replaced. The way the hose has been done over the last number of years is that basically, half of a rig has been done on the first year, and then the second year, the other half of the hose. We have a number of different sizes of hose, and of course, there's different prices. Last year, the engine that I'm working on this year had its supply line, its large five-inch diameter hose replaced. This year, I'm working on the smaller hoses for that engine. And I'm also working to try to get a little bit ahead on one of the other engines because of if we switch to that new technology hose, I want to get a couple of rigs in with that rather than just one.
And then my last question is about testing. The testing budget has more than doubled.
Testing a fire hose or testing of?
No, annual physicals.
Oh, that one, yes.
Do you have twice as many members?
We have twice as many members that are taking the department physical. The I believe it was two years ago now, the the state implemented the cancer insurance program for volunteer firefighters. And the workload greatly increased on our medical officer as a result, because there were a lot more people who wanted to make sure that their medicals got got in so that they would be eligible for the cancer prevention. In the past, a lot of, a fair number of people would go to their own doctor and submit paperwork. The problem with that was that the physicals were never really done, to my understanding, were never really done properly by those physicians. There was some discrepancies as to whether they passed breathing tests that were supposed to be part of the physical and some other issues. So the department as a whole made it a mandate that anyone got who had their physical be part of the system, partly for record-keeping and partly for continuity of the physicals, that everyone had the same, that all the physicals were supposed to be done through the testing company that we've been using for well over ten years. But, so the number of physicals that have occurred have gone up, which is why the increase. The reality is, we blew through our budget this year and I had to transfer money.
That's all from me.
But on the board, have any other questions for the chief?
Yeah, I do. I think that your helpfulness in trying to reduce has been well-received. I would like you to go back and take a look at the increases that we've talked about and see if there's any additional that can be taken out. Specifically, I'd like you to talk to your people about your pagers and improvements. We're not trying to twist your arm. And we're not suggesting that all the different improvements are undesirable. Actually, I think they all are. The question is whether they can be postponed.
I understand.
Every little bit helps. And the more that can be done voluntarily, the less onerous it is for the board to have to make subjective cuts that maybe, that everybody's not going to like.
I understand. And I will be honest. I've only really been looking at this for the last couple of days as far as the cuts because I wasn't really aware that the revenues had dropped as much as they had. So I didn't know that we were going to run into this much of a problem.
Okay, so we're running into a problem, not only for this fiscal year, but significantly for next fiscal year.
They're dropping like a rock, chief. Just so everybody knows, the chief is, or one of the chiefs, or all the chiefs are going to come to the next work session because we're going to have a discussion about, you know, the feasibility of the Fines carnival and the parade. So we want to have an open discussion about.
That means the the work session for our regular meeting? Right, okay.
We're going to pull a plug. We've got to pull a plug soon.
Yes, thank you. Not that I want the plug pulled, but I understand it may need to be.
Yeah. So we'll see where we are in the world then. But thank you for working on this and going back and sharpening your pencil. We appreciate it. If you have any more suggested changes, please email them to Jerry.
Okay.
Thank you very much, chief, and thank all the chiefs for all the work they do every day and all your men and women.
Okay. No, thank you for your time tonight.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Bye.
And now we go to the other chief. Hi, guys. Hey, Chris.
Mayor, before the chief goes, I don't see trustee Tifur. I don't know if he dropped. He must have dropped. I don't see him on the screen.
He was just on.
He's on. He's just his camera.
I'm on the phone with trustee Tifer right now. I've got him, so he can hear the entire meeting, and I'm getting him reconnected.
Chris?
Yes.
Do you want to present? Anyone else to ask questions?
It's probably easier if you guys just ask questions. I could throw out some numbers, but ultimately, you guys are going to answer the questions, so.
I just want to point out before that the chief's budget is essentially flat. It's he's provided a budget for this year with everything that he needs regarding personnel, public safety, response, and everything associated with that for an increase of less than one percent. So I appreciate that very much because it's hard to do when we're dealing with increased costs all over the place.
Chief, how many sworn officers have you?
We're budgeted for fifty-one.
Including yourself.
Correct.
But you're one down, right?
Correct.
And if the one down resulting in additional overtime, are we able to rearrange schedules not to have to worry about that? Not that we want to not worry about it.
That's difficult to answer now because of the situation that we're in. But ultimately, it will result in overtime.
How many officers are out sick or in disability?
We should probably discuss that at another time.
Sorry, my bad. My bad. Forget I said that. I appreciate you coming in with a flat budget.
Yeah, that works good. You know what, if I can ask, chief, the timing situation with the vehicles? Typically, what's your, I know it frustrates you, what's the lead time on vehicles? And it looks like there's an increase in the vehicles, but that's probably because of the new technology, right?
So Ford came out with a new platform. And as such, they're very late getting off the assembly line. We ordered two several months ago that we're still waiting for.
Yeah. You think that's going to speed up as they get geared up?
They promised us it will.
Yeah, okay. Okay, good.
Is this the SUV or?
So, yeah, so Ford did away with the interceptor, the car, and they only have the SUV now. But they changed the chassis. They changed the body style a little bit, and it caused a several-month delay in getting the cars. I'm sorry, the SUVs.
Which has only increased now because of factories not being operating at full capacity.
The, right, the lag time would be increased now, right?
Yeah.
I appreciate that you're coming in with basically a flat budget. Is there anything that you could suggest that could be postponed for a year?
I think collectively, we've done the best that we could. I don't see putting off anything until following year. Everything that I have in this budget is a need-to-have, not a want-to-have. So I don't think there's anything else that I could defer.
What do you usually, Chris, replace two cars a year?
Three.
And we take that out of operating, not out of capital, right?
Correct.
At one point, we were taking out a capital, right, years ago?
Not during my tenure.
I think. When I was a trustee, I think they were doing it. But I think it's better to do it the way you're doing it, actually. Because it's a recurring expense. When we were young, Chris.
That was many moons ago.
You did, you know, you You did, you know, you did, you should. You zeroed out, chief, you zeroed out Taser repair and, oh, I see, because we had that big purchase, right?
So we entered into the leasing agreement with Taser.
Right, okay.
We didn't have to deal with it anymore.
Okay, good.
Tasers?
Yes.
How often does a taser have to be replaced?
Taser will warranty it for either four or five years.
Yeah, I thought it was four or five.
Right.
Yeah, I think we just declared some chaser surplus within the last two months.
Correct.
Just can't put these things on eBay.
No. Please don't.
Does anybody have any questions for Chief Lee?
I mean, some of the overtime is really not our cost because it's billed out to other construction projects. And I guess the question is, do you think we'll have fewer of those kinds of projects in the coming year if everything kind of grinds to a halt?
I can only judge what's been going on for the last seven weeks, and there has been a significant slowdown in the amount of details that we've done.
But that doesn't work in our favor because it's overtime that's compensated for.
Right. Actually, we lose a little money. We lose a little money.
A little, right.
Anybody else have any questions for the chief? Jerry?
Nope, mayor, I don't have any more questions.
It's an easy night, chief, huh? It wasn't bad. After the last seven weeks that I've had, I could use an easy night.
That's true. That's true.
I'm sure you could.
Thank you for everything you and your men and women are doing.
You're very welcome. Thank you very much. Thank you for your leadership.
We'll get through it.
Yes, we will.
All right.
Right.
Want to talk about revenue? We've got some time?
Yeah, we worked. Dan, Laura, Augie and I worked for over an hour and a half earlier today on revenue. We basically augmented some of the information that we provided in subsequent emails. So in previous emails, we sent you the spreadsheet that was still kind of formulating and developing. And so what we did today is we we took the mind-numbing approach and looked at every single line and came up with what is going to be presented to you with, by Augie right now. So if you can see some of the items, and I'm not going to be able to recall the various methodology that we used because we looked at every individual item separately. But the basic methodology was that we were going to potentially lose two months of revenue in quite a few areas. And so the last column represents either losing two months of revenue or going further and trying to figure out what the impact is going to be to us in the budget, in the tentative budget that's presented to you. So for instance, if I can go down to A1, the $630,000, Augie. Is sales tax. We'll talk about the sales tax. A110, I forget the other number. Keep going up, yeah. A110.1120, sales tax distribution. So we developed this, this number, or the projected revenue loss. We projected originally 300, $3.7 million. The county in a call a couple of weeks ago, every day is the same now anyway. So a couple of weeks ago, we had a call with the county and they said to probably keep your sales tax projection flat from the previous year. So our previous year, sales tax original budget was $3.03 million. So far, we've collected, according to this spreadsheet, almost 2 million of that. We're not really sure. I think the May, the April number comes to us. Did we get March yet, Augie? Do you recall?
Oh, no, yeah, we'll wait on that.
And then the May will come in, you know, past, close to the end of this budget year.
Yeah, it should come in probably sometime in early July and then we accrue it to the prior fiscal year.
So we're projecting that sales tax is going to be right around $3 million. So what we're looking at is a projected revenue loss of $630,000, based on what we projected. Excuse me, on March 13th. Then there's other items. There's other items here where, as we continue to go down, we're looking at potentially losing, you know, two months worth of revenue or in the event that, and we can go to building department fees. Augie? Further down, I think it is, right? Yeah, right here.
There is.
So we're looking at projected loss of 20%, 25%. And Dan Sonoff will be able to explain to you a reason why we looked at something like that.
So what I did was I looked at, kind of like what the county did in terms of the last recession for about 10 years ago, I looked at what our building permit revenues were for 2007, 2008, 2009, 2010. And really, we saw the biggest decline in the 2009 fiscal year, or the year that ended May 31, 2009, which is about a year into the recession. We went down about a third, 33%. So I'm kind of estimating that we'll probably be in that range again. But with the increase that the board adopted on Monday night with the building permit fee, we probably will see some additional revenue, but it's, you know, we're thinking 25% is probably where it's going to wind up.
And so permits, electrical permits, permits other, which are principally plumbing permits and building permits, were reduced 25%. Sorry for coffee. What other items? Augie, if you can zone in on a couple of big items and we can explain a little bit more of the methodology. Oh, yeah. So this was potentially, and if you guys can help me out, I can't recall where the 190 came from.
This law, the fines and forfeit of bail is, are composed of the moving violations, the parking violations, and the code violations.
Right.
Obviously, with, you know, depending how long this lockdown lasts, less vehicles on the road, less, means less moving violations, means less parking violations. So that's kind of, those are the big numbers that are composed in that line.
So what the total of all of the reductions is what?
Oh, that's at the very bottom. That's the surprise at the end. He'll show you in a second.
Yeah.
Yeah. So mortgage tax. Oh, the mortgage tax is the same way. Mortgage tax, we anticipated, you know. So the discussion with the mortgage tax was if I'm, if I want to sell my house in June, but I wait until January, we're still going to collect that mortgage tax on that property. There will be a reduction potentially in the price of homes, which will impact the tax. But we came up with a $75,000, basically, it was a number to try to anticipate something in the way of mortgage tax, but we really don't know what the mortgage tax impact is going to be. So we just, we just utilized the $75,000 number. And can you guys recall if we discussed anything further on mortgage tax?
No, mortgage tax is, one of the remedies is very unpredictable.
Yeah.
We just took two twelfths of it.
Yeah, that was it. That's all we could really come up with. And then, of course, if we can move up on the, on the spreadsheet to the recreation, everything that we discussed last night in recreation, we reflected in this, in this spreadsheet.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we can hear you.
Mortgage tax. I just got fed up again by clips, so I'm sorry, I apologize for.
That's okay.
But on mortgage tax, it's not a huge, but I did see, and I've heard that even before the crisis, some municipalities were budgeting about 80%, even before the crisis. So a good example, town of Marinerick budgeted 80%, so 20% less based on a normal year. So that's a good indication. So on top of that, we have what we have now, so.
Okay, so that would make that number 90,000.
Probably around that time, yes.
Right around there. So we're at 75, so it can be amended to use that, you know, to use that methodology. The, and then what we did with recreation is we just used the numbers that Augie, Jonathan, and Laura and Jason Pinto worked on yesterday. And so all those numbers are reflected on the spreadsheet on your screen in, in blue. And then, so the final number at the very bottom of the screen is a significant number, which we all knew was going to be a significant number. And it's in excess of 2 million. It's 2.207 million dollars. So if our trend continues, to the credit of some of the department heads, our operating budget has gone down significantly. I know that Augie and Laura can try to update it live. But we still have quite a few budget meetings to to go through in order to figure out what the actual impact is going to be.
I don't know if we're going to talk about the non-departmental expenses, Jerry. But, you know, with the conference call with the county this afternoon, one of the things the county executive mentioned was rather than fund their tax certs through their general fund, they were going to borrow for their tax certs. I don't know if that's what we want to consider as part of this budget. I think we were proposing an appropriation of around $700,000 for the tax certs in 2021. We're aware of several large certs coming down the line from the town of Rye and also the town of Marinerick.
And so, and so if I can recall the numbers from, from the email earlier today, we typically budget 350. And then I guess we added an additional, Augie, like 300,000, an additional 300,000 to that?
Yes.
Yeah. Because we knew Laura and Augie attended the town of Rice last tax assessment meeting, or the assessment meeting that they hold. And I guess we were told that there was going to be some big ones coming down the line.
It would be several big settlements to well over 200,000.
And so that's a different approach to be able to bond tax certs instead of taking them out of operating. If there's a way to lessen the impact on, on this budget, that could be one option for the board to, to consider. And that would be, of course, a significant help to, to our budget. The county earlier today, hold on, let me get my notes, said that they're looking at an impact of what comes out to 4.2 to 7.6% to their budget. This 2,069, 2,2069 number on your screen is approximately 5% of our budget. So we're right in line with what the county has anticipated that they're going to lose. They're going to lose somewhere between 90 and 160 million dollars. So we're thinking along the same lines. Whether we're both right, nobody knows.
Well, I wouldn't count on this, but, you know, there's talk that the next congressional relief bill will have relief for local governments. So, you know, obviously you can't budget for that, but we can hope in prayer.
Senator Schumer talked about that today on the county call. And my takeaway from it is that the Republicans hate it utterly. And to the extent any of us know people in Republican senator states, we should call them and tell them to contact, you know, their senators. He didn't sound particularly hopeful. I mean, I think there might, maybe some, but, but the Republicans are fighting it tooth and nail, it sounds like. Was that your takeaway, Jerry? I mean, you were.
No, that's accurate. That's, that's what he said. He's less eloquent than, than deputy mayor Winstraw.
I don't think about it.
He was pretty blunt, right?
Yeah, it was. I wasn't hopeful after hearing him.
Yeah. So that's where our number is.
Grim.
Yeah. Do you have any sense of what the bond market is doing in terms of, I mean, is it still relatively inexpensive to bond some of this, or is that changing?
I don't know. Laura and Augie may know more and have a sense.
Let's just say, Augie, we bonded the searchy areas. What are we paying on a bond now?
Right now, the bonds are under 2%. Bands are under 1%. But the thing is, you're going to issue a five-year bond. We can't predict down the future what the rates are going to be.
Yeah. Okay. So.
We're just trying to get through 2020, 21.
So this is our most accurate assumption of the revenue loss.
And just, the county's predictions, were they based upon like the the economy trying to get back in shape by June or something like that, they said?
About their sales tax predictions?
Yeah.
I mean, they, they were predicting a 20% reduction in the sales tax revenue for April, May, June, July, a 10%, a 10% reduction in, I think, August, September, October, then 5% December, January, and then back to normal. I mean, I, if you saw the email I sent yesterday, the county said that their March collection was equal to their February collection. But if you look at their original spreadsheet that they sent out to all of us, you know, they're predicting, you know, $62 million in March as opposed to $50 million in February. So if a two-week shutdown costs them $12 billion in, in tax revenue for a 12-month period, that's a, that's a significant number.
Because people spend, you see people shopping is they're in the grocery stores, right? And you don't pay sales tax on food.
And obviously with the not, you know, the incredibly low price of oil right now.
Yeah.
Even if, you know, the shutdown tomorrow, the, the, the sales tax generated from the gasoline is going to be paltry compared to what it was a year ago, two years ago. In addition to the oil crisis, there are other external factors which are going to impact that sales tax regardless.
And I'll tell you, I'm driving into the Bronx every morning. It's like driving at midnight on a Sunday night.
Yeah.
Somebody, does anybody have any questions or suggestions on the, oh, there's one question I had. In an increase from the recreation department, we haven't like offset the cost decrease yet, have we? I mean, if we're not having these programs, there's less cost too, right?
And we did that last night.
Yeah, yes.
Did that last night.
And there was a significant reduction. Reduction, I mean, there was.
Huge. It was huge.
That was my best shot. That's what I got.
No, there's something there. There is.
Okay. Is there, is there any hope here?
Crickets.
No silver lining?
No, I told you it was going to be a surprise, right? I told you that.
Let's hope this is the silver lining and it's not worse.
Yeah, you're right, Laura. You're right. Yeah, you're right, Nora. You're right. I, I think that, yeah, it, it could be much worse. Let's pray to God it isn't. But, you know, like I said, the unemployment numbers come out tomorrow, and if it's another six million people, incredible. All right. Well, thank you for putting this together. I know it must, it wasn't a happy task.
No, it's, it's not. It's hard to guess.
Yes.
Hard to guess. It's frustrating. I want to be wrong in one way. I don't want to be wrong the other way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions on some items. I don't know if we're wrapping up. Is it time to ask a couple of questions?
Sure, go ahead. Speak up though, please, Vic, and I can hear you well.
Okay, I just just got set up, so I don't know what's, let me see if it's my volume. Let me see what I can do here. Okay, I, I just, let me see what I can find. Rental of property land. Let's, what, what is that? It was thirty this year. I think probably that has to do with, with, with wind, with, with, with the golf, but it has to do with sport time also. I see tennis two places. There's tennis fees in where, where we have all the camp. It was forty this year. It was going up to two fifty-five, and it's now coming down sixty-three.
Do you want to know why that is in tennis?
Yes, and also in, in, I saw in the budget, when you have, when you have, I think it's rental of property, you have, you have sport time in there. It's not here in this list, but it's in our list of revenues. So, so explain those two lines.
So, so the, the sport time was budgeted because this time last year, we didn't know if we were going to have an agreement going forward into the following year. So, that's why we only budgeted for a couple of months of revenue. Then the board and sport time developed and approved a one-year operating budget, an operating agreement. And so, the full, the full amount was, was anticipated, not the full amount, but a higher, much higher amount was anticipated for the full year, I should say, for the full year. And I had the same question about rental of property as well. So, that was something, Laura, were you looking that up, or Augie, were you looking that up, which items that comes in under?
See, rental of property, I see it in our budget, page sixty-five, US open, thirty goes to forty-five. It was tentative. The reimbursement of parks, of course, was zero, is twenty-two, and sport time, seventy-five. So, sport time is there with seventy-five.
That's the minimum, that's the minimum payment.
All right. I think, I think we were depositing money in two locations. There was the rent, the monthly rent, and then they gave us the payment for the, the tennis fees, and it was.
Okay, so you.
Places.
So, you split it in two?
Yeah, that's.
What, what is different? What is the tennis fees different? Anything?
That's the, the license fee, the percentage of the gross.
Yeah, the operating, the operating license green.
Okay, so you do reflect it here both ways. Okay, that's, how about?
Yes.
How about, how about the the parking meters? We, we have eight hundred. You say it's coming down like one thirty-three.
Parking meters is an easy one to calculate, because we anticipate we're not going to start collecting on parking meters until August first. So, we just eliminated two months.
Great. Oh, for the next one.
We hope we're wrong, but in, in this, in this projection, parking meters, we assume no collection in June and July. Let's put it that way.
And my comment was, I, I, I did something a little different, which was just looked at five years back. And if you look, and there's some, some off years because of what was the economy, but it was basically seven forty-five. I'm going nineteen eighteen. And then before it was seven hundred.
Yeah.
For that, six seventy-five. And before that, I think probably that was before the, the, the increase of the rates, that, that famous summer.
Yeah, well, there, there. Yeah, there are a couple of factors. First, a couple of years ago, we extended the parking on Marineric Avenue until eight P M.
Yeah, remember.
Second, you know, you're, you're right, there have been increased, increases in the fees, the parking fees. Another item with more usage of the multi-space parking meters, the apps, because you can't top onto someone else's time, we're, we're going to see more, a higher revenue because of that.
Okay.
Not like the old days when you parked at a meter and there's fifteen minutes left.
Yeah.
You can't make that assumption anymore.
Anyway, five, five years ago, it was four hundred and fifty-five.
Yeah, and it's been going up steadily. Those are real numbers.
Okay, one last question here is at the end, which is the transfer from the water fund and from debt service. We pulled from water fund fifty and from the debt service six, one sixty. And that is reflected in our funds. So, what, what is, what is, why is that the case? And it doesn't really affect the revenues here, but I've always had that question. Maybe Augie or Laura can help me understand. You see my, my, the bottom, very, at the very bottom.
Yeah, at the very end of the spreadsheet.
Why do we pull money from the funds to here?
Money from the debt service fund is pulled into the general fund to help offset debt service cost. So, any extra funds that are remaining in a project that was funded through bonds or bands, the money has to be used to pay off future bonds and bands. As far as the transfer from the water fund, that's to offset some of the administrative cost management does to do in assisting in the water fund.
Okay.
So, part of my salary, part of Dan's salary, Jerry's salary, which we, John Carvino, that we do the bills, we manage the bonding and everything, it's also part of our salary to pay for this.
Okay. All right, Nick, thank you.
Mayor, I don't have anything else.
Oh, you know what? I'm sorry. I just went through a whole speech. I was on mute.
But we enjoyed it.
My son did.
The question is, is whether anybody in the audience has any questions. If they, I didn't, we forgot to ask that when we were on the last two.
We, we don't take, during a work session, we don't take audience questions.
From the budget committee, you do. At least that's what we told them.
If they're from the budget committee, I'll be okay.
Well, do they? Alan does. Somebody click on, click on Alan, Augie. Alan Hauptman.
I don't know if, if Cliff set up this Zoom so that they can do that. Can she?
What? Hi, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, a Verizon commercial.
Yeah.
The one thought that I have, and many of your questions to the department heads have been going in that direction, kind of. But given that we really have no clue how long this pandemic is going to last, or the lockdown is going to last, and we have no clue what's going to happen come the fall again, do we want to, and I'm about to be very extreme, so I'm warning you, do we want to consider doing a budget that's really bare bones? Keep the lights on and don't do anything else. I think, I think if we end up raising taxes when the unemployment rate, and Tom, I believe you mentioned, God knows what we're going to hear tomorrow when the new numbers come out, you know, raising taxes with such huge unemployment numbers is, really isn't the right thing to do.
Well, you know what? There, there's not a lot we don't do that isn't vital. You know, we, we have police protection, fire protection, sanitation, protection.
Yep.
And that, that's ninety-eight percent of our budget. And, you know, we can't skimp on those. I mean, I, part of that is keeping the, the community healthy too. I understand what you're saying, Alan, and I'm sure there's a lot of things that we're not going to be doing this year in terms of recreation stuff.
Right, I heard that yesterday from Jason.
But I don't know what, what's, you know, extemporaneous, you know, because the second you cut something, that's important to somebody else. I've been down this road plenty of times.
Yep, you know, I know it's very difficult to do, but my concern, bigger concern, from an unemployment perspective, if we're raising property taxes, how many people aren't going to be paying their taxes at all? And that's revenue we're counting on. And we have no way of answering that now.
No, no, it's hard.
I, I, I understand your concern. I really do, but I, um.
You know, I was listening to, um, and, oh my God, I just drew blank on his name, from the fire department, fire chief.
Pete Primrose.
Thank you, Chief Primrose. And based on a different, completely unrelated request, I started gathering information on surrounding communities on their fire departments. We have fewer calls, we have much more equipment, and we have many more houses. So, if a good chunk of that budget was for improvements in our firehouses and on the equipment, maybe we need to look at that. You know, what are those needs truly? And how do other municipalities do with less?
They, just as an aside, they also have paid firemen and we don't.
Uh, some were mixed.
Mixed, but they all have paid.
Right, but the point, actually, the one that was all volunteered never answered any of my questions after chasing multiple times, so I gave up. But whether it's volunteer or not volunteer, why would we need more engines, more ladders, more houses?
That is the next existential question. I agree with you.
You know, and I'm not trying to pick on them. They do a great job. But, you know, if we're trying to do bare bones or cut where we can, maybe we put off some of the improvements in the firehouses. Unless the ceiling's going to collapse on them, which clearly we can't do.
Okay.
Just a thought.
Thank you, Ellen.
I appreciate it.
I appreciate you. Thank you for coming.
Thanks.
And I do, I, I do want to say, I do appreciate your, your comment, and I don't think we're, we're too off from that reference point, which is not increased taxes, because with, with the, with the, with the revenues that we just saw coming down too, cuts, well, we, we should keep it as a reference. I, 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 I do think, I, I mean, I, I hear your concern.
No, and I know your questions to the department heads have been, what can you do without? What can you push off till the next year? So, I know you're thinking that way. I didn't mean to imply you weren't. I'm just not sure if we're digging enough.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Steph, for the hard work.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, crew, for working hard. Hopefully, we stay safe until we see each other next time.
Thanks.
Good night.
Yep, good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. Thank you, Cliff.
Yep, you're welcome. By the way, your video looks good.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you.
I'm glad it worked. Okay.
We'll get out of here.